Okay, why don't we go ahead and reconvene the meeting? And we're with Director Tan with Public Works.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The Public Works Department is the second largest department in the city and it's made up of seven divisions, the Administration and Engineering and then Operations and Maintenance divisions. And there's, within the Operations and Maintenance, there's the Streets, Water, Stormwater, Wastewater, Central Garage, and Solid Waste, which I'll be presenting shortly. There are a total of 56 employees in the entire Public Works Department. As for the Administration and Engineering, this department serves as a professional engineering resource for the city. And what we do is we perform work for managing and coordinating CIP projects to ensure that the projects are completed and delivered on time and cost effectively and efficiently. And the department also provides technical and administrative support for the city's traffic safety and parking committee, and as well as performing review and approval of development applications to ensure it's compliant with the city standards and specs. So, go on. So, some accomplishments noted on the slides. We have in fiscal year 1819, the department completed 20 design studies. And I don't want to, you know, didn't want to list all the projects on the slide here. So, there's, the list of projects are included in the Accomplishments section in the Operating Budget. And some of the highlight projects include the much-needed resurfacing of the downtown parking lots. Four of the five parking lots have already been resurfaced. And the remaining lot, which was used by the plaza contractor until recently, will be reserved as, scheduled to be paved in a couple of months. The navigable sewer study was also completed. This project was a collaboration between the counties of San Mateo, City of South San Francisco, and our city. And its mitigation measures included in the study will help the Barre neighborhood in our city by removing them out of the flood area if other flooding sources are also mitigated. So, in addition to the design and studies, the city, the department completed 11 construction projects. Numerous water and sewer replacement projects were also included part of this 11 projects. And they are also listed in the Accomplishment section in the Operating Budget. Strategic initiatives here, so, you know, as is stated on there, the department will continue to further replace the critical aging facilities and infrastructure. A lot of our infrastructure are more than 100 years old, and a lot of our work plan is to replace the water and sewer projects. So, some of the goals for next year includes completing construction of the Cunningham Water Tank and replacement of water and sewer utilities in an area east of El Camino, which we're calling the avenues 1-1, 1-2, and 1-3, which is within the Cupid Road area. And so, you'll be seeing those projects coming to, under construction fairly soon. As for the budget, the table shows a comparison between the last fiscal year and this proposed budget. There is a slight increase in expenditures. Some of the changes includes the salary step increase and increase in health and pension costs. The department also included opposed budget costs for performing inspections for commercial and industrial inspections, which was previously conducted by the county. Additional budget was included for adding the services for serving geotechnical investigation and traffic study as well. In addition to that, the budget also includes the support of a new flood and sea level rise agency. This was recently created by the county with other cities participating to fund the agency. And the city is allocating $40,000 per year for the next three years to put this new agency. And staff brought this item to council for approval in March of this year. So, that's all I have for this. If you have any questions.
Anything from council on the Administration and Engineering portion? If not, okay.
Next, I'll be presenting again on the Streets Division. So, staff from the Streets Maintenance and Operations Division performs multiple duties. And they are called to action to assist with different aspects of city needs. The division's responsibility is for maintenance and repair of the city's roadway, as well as maintaining a clear appearance of our city's aesthetics for roadways for residents and businesses. Some of the work consists of filling potholes for repair and completing work orders from the Traffic Safety Parking Committee, refreshing traffic legends, replacing fading signs, cleaning sidewalks, and painting of our curbs. So, during fiscal year 1819, the division completed many projects and tasks. Some of the accomplishments are highlighted on the table there. There are six intersections that were completed. Last year, other accomplishment include the replacement of 113 signs and 73 damaged poles. The division also, with assistance of a contractor, coordinated the repair of 58 streetlight outages. And one of the strategic initiatives for the entire city actually is to improve the, to provide the highest quality of pavement network. Currently, the city pavement condition index PCI is at 61, which the city manager noted earlier. And the estimated funding level for the program is about $1.7 million, which includes the SB1 gas tax funds. Even though this funding level is higher than the previous fiscal years, it is inadequate to resurface many of the street segments. So, the evaluation shows that the city needs approximately $6 million per year if we want to increase the PCI to 80 within the next 10 years. So, however, in the meantime, the division is continuing to maintain the roadways to, you know, to prevent the further damage. Pothole repairs are continuously being performed in order to prevent further damage to the roadway surface. And staff will also seek opportunities to enhance the aesthetic appeal of the roadway by applying for grants if available. One of the recent projects that was completed is the Sabrina Avenue Medians Project, which improved the aesthetic of the roadway. As for the budget, it didn't really change too much from the fiscal year. Similar to the Administration and Engineering budget, there's some budget increase for salary, health, and pension costs. There are some reductions to supplies and equipment as well. There's a one-time request last year for a fence replacement project of $35,000, which is being deleted from this year's budget. And there are no new proposed budget enhancements from this division. concludes my presentation. Have any questions?
Questions from council on street maintenance? Marty?
I see here your goals for the purchase of the hot mixed trailer. Is that the small one or page 150?
One... What page did you get in? Sorry?
150 in this...
Last bullet.
Last bullet.
Yes, so, I'm going to ask my, if you want more questions, if you want more answers, I could ask my street manager about it.
That and, I know we've been making some progress on our streetlights, and just that there's a number of them that still need to be looked at, and that inventory, just kind of wanted to check in with you on that as well.
Correct. Then we completed a total of, I think we have a total of 17 streetlights intersections in our city. We completed 14 out of that. I think there's some locations within Caltrans quarter that we haven't completed yet. That's something that needs to be coordinated with Caltrans to do the work.
And I guess my, my other question I'll go ahead and ask is about just our striping in general. Do we, how much of that do we do in-house? At some point, we did it in-house? And just wanted to share with you, as you, as you drive around the city, there's, a lot of them are pretty well faded, and it's, how, where are we, when are we going to assess and start refreshing those, those crosswalks?
Yeah, it is in our work plan to do that. And again, it's, the city staff, you know, we have limited resources, so there's other work plans that are being performed. But I think it is to resurface the, to restripe some of the crosswalks are actually in our work plan. And whether we do it in-house or we can come back to City Council with the contractual services for a striping contractor like we did last fiscal year.
Right.
That's something that we can look into doing.
Yeah. If I can just add a little bit to that. Councilmember Medina, I think your question is a good one that articulates some of our challenges, which is our crews can do the striping in-house, but there's a lot to be done, both in striping and other things, and they don't have enough time and capacity to get to everything. And I too, like the council and the community, have noticed where some of our striping is faded and have asked to have, hey, when are we, when are we going to get to that? And let's put a plan in place. And with our current resources, that comes at pulling away from other things. And so, it's not a, it's not an easy answer of, we can do it in-house, go do it. It's, okay, well, if we do that, what else are we not doing? And kind of the sad truth is we have a lot of high-level critical priorities that need to be accomplished. One of the things that I did ask staff to do is put together a plan to do the restryping near the school sites where we have to stop, look, and wave because we can do that in-house and we do have the stencils. And that does come at the delay of other things, but I do think it's important. And we're putting together a plan, and we'll be doing that, fitting it in with other work, but over a period of time to refresh those. So, it's part of our unfunded need challenge.
Perhaps it would be an opportune time to look at, I know we have summertime help with the parks for various issues. I believe that's correct with, is that right? It's outside your department, but...
Summertime help, are you talking volunteers or...?
No, no, with, with, with part-time workers helping out with parks. And this may be a time that we can evaluate the usage of part-time employees to come and assist with, with the striping. It's something, a skill level that could be taught pretty quickly with, with the right oversight of a lead taking control of that. But we have to figure out one way or the other to get it done. And I totally agree with you in that it is definitely a challenge, a budgetary challenge. But how do, how do we get the best bang for our dollar?
So, the typical way for striping, which is the thermal plastic, which requires skill and tools that we have, is typically if you're not going to do it in-house with your full-time personnel, to contract it out to someone that does that. I am not aware of the ability to use part-time labor for that. I think it is something that can be trained, but I think that's a service delivery model that we can look into. I'm telling you, my gut would be, you'd be hiring people during the summer, spending a lot of time training them to do that work, and then they're going to go away. So, unless you have a cadre of people that you can kind of rely on and train once, it's, it's a lot different than hiring someone to do summer help with landscape maintenance than for someone to do summer help with roadway maintenance. So, we can certainly look into it. I'm not saying that it's not possible. I'm, I'm giving you my, my professional gut is that it's a challenge for that type of work to be done with part-time labor.
And the last thing is the opportunity to look at sharing services and equipment with other cities. I believe that there have been a couple of meetings this year at the higher level, and maybe we can talk about that a little bit, just to kind of share with the council overall.
Sure. City Manager Mike Futuel in South San Francisco has talked about it in a number of our North County Mayor and City Managers meetings, the idea of partnering on more shared services. We do partner on, on some shared services. Garages are typically where people in-source. And the concept of looking into partnering, for example, with paving has come up at the city manager and mayor level, and the Public Works Directors, I believe, have had some initial conversations on how to do that. One of the challenges, as you know, is that the cost of paving has constantly been going up. And at least the thought is, oftentimes, cities go out, and we've had that experience recently, where we go out and the contract is much more than the engineer's estimate. And so, we kind of decide, oh, maybe we should delay this or do something else. So, if you have economies of scale, is there a way to do it? I think that that is something that the cities have talked about, and we would look into. Everything comes with challenges, but it could potentially be something that the contractors would be interested in. Another idea that has been floated is sharing equipment, which becomes more and more challenging from a safety perspective of having various cities and various crews use the equipment. But it has been something that has been talked about. There's some equipment that lends itself to that, such as a boom truck, but there are other equipment that really, that really doesn't, because you want to have your crew used to the truck just because of the, the safety nature and loaning it out can create some challenges. But I think those conversations are happening. I can't say that, at least the ones I've participated in, have landed with proposals that we're going to do X, but people are talking about it absolutely.
Anything else?
I do want to clarify one thing, you know, in regards to the last bullet on, you know, 150. It's not to purchase, it's to assess. That's what it says on there. So, you know, we'll just be evaluating whether we would need it or not.
Is that a striping trailer or which?
Mike.
Trying to understand.
It's for pothole.
I'm sorry, I turned it off. What the actual piece of equipment is?
It would be for a patch truck, a hot truck. Or can we repeat it?
A 10-yard truck that, with the...
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Ted Chapmans, the Street Storm Manager. It would be for a potholing patch truck or a patch trailer to better utilize filling in the potholes.
I heard it.
Way to make your point.
I'll take that as an emphatic explanation.
You're welcome. Anything else for the director? Community Development.
Hi. Thanks. Good evening, or good afternoon. Seems like we've been here all day. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Darcy Smith, the Community and Economic Development Director. And I'm going to cover the Planning Division and the Building Inspection and Code Enforcement Division. So, the two divisions within Community and Economic Development. So, first, I'll start with planning. Planning, the Planning Division has 6.25 FTEs, and they're responsible for a lot of core city functions, both reviewing development applications, in addition to processing and reviewing most of the building permits that go through the Building Division, which I'll talk about in the latter part of my presentation. Like the Building Division, they review and approve all new businesses in the city. So, they're involved in economic development. And they also are involved in the city's long-range policy plans, which a number of them are working their way through the process right now, including the zoning code update, parking management plan, streetscape plans. So, this division has been really busy, and I want to emphasize, we've been operating down staff. We've had the retirement of Mark Sullivan in September, and we have not filled that position yet because we made some changes to it. So, in some cases, when we have a vacancy, we don't bring on consulting staff, which was the case here, and we were able to save some money in our operating budget. However, we've accomplished a lot this year. As you know, we completed the downtown parking management plan, which had been underway for a few years. We've made a lot of progress with outside consultant staff on the Bay Hill specific plan and the YouTube Phase 1 entitlement. We are, have worked on the zoning code update and other ordinances, including the small wireless facilities ordinance. We initiated the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan, which will come before you in August, and our basic work, which is pretty steady volume of development project entitlements and building permits. We have a number of sort of really mission-critical strategic initiatives that we're working on. And I'm happy to report that three of those strategic initiatives will be completed soon, by the end of August, with the completion of the Streetscape Plan. And then, the remaining three large ones will be completed early next year. The ongoing one is the Economic Development Program. And I want to emphasize that while there is not a new position as part of this budget, all of the staff within Community and Economic Development work on some facet of economic development activity every single day. Sure, the front line of connecting with new businesses, trying to get those businesses through the permit process, and get them opened responding to existing business needs. So, the budget this year had some changes, and I want to highlight a few of them here. The main one was to look at revenues. And currently, we've adjusted the revenues to match expected activity. Many of the development projects that we're processing are going to be processed through the remainder of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. So, we've realigned those revenues to match activity. However, the city is, has the fee study underway, so I want to emphasize that we are looking at cost recovery. And right now, for example, the Planning Division does not capture any revenue from building permits, but it is a core function that we do review building permits. So, we will be looking at the fee study and, for example, that type of revenue source. We have recommended, in light of that, one change in the budget, which is modification of one of our enhancements that has been approved for several years in a row. And that would move the Assistant Planner position to the building budget. It would also reduce the cost by $21,000, because we reduce it from an associate position to an assistant position, and change it from a consultant position to a limited-term position. There are many service-level challenges within the Planning Division. It's small, but the workload continues to ramp up, and the demands on the planning staff's time is significant. So, while we are looking at business process improvements to process applications in a timely manner, the department is sort of faced with a lot of really high-profile and time-sensitive strategic initiatives. They're city initiatives. So, we're constantly striving to balance the sort of needs of the development community or homeowners or business owners who want to obtain approvals with the needs of the city to implement the strategic initiatives. So, the Building Division had a little bit more change within that budget. It's a larger division, almost 10 FTEs. They focus not just on building permit processing, but seeing those building permits through to final completion. So, many years, it's, a building permit will spread many years. They also get involved in the planning application reviews because they want to, they review the, the planning application plans before they go through the building permit phase to ensure that they comply with any applicable codes. And as you know, the Code Enforcement Division with three code enforcement officers is actively responding to complaints and identifying and resolving violations. So, there have been many accomplishments, including those around technology, which really improve efficiencies without adding staff. So, in the budget last year, you approved digital handheld devices that allow the building inspector and the co-inspectors and the officers to improve field operation efficiencies by using those devices in the field. We just deployed a soft launch of our online permit submittal system for routine permit applications, such as water heaters or simpler permits, and we'll have a full launch in the summer. We adopted the Flood Plane Hazard Management Ordinance, which is in the Building Chapter of the municipal code. Also been a lot of cases submitted, and they respond to those. The strategic initiatives are a little more limited in this division, but as I mentioned, they're involved in the Flood Plane Hazard Management Ordinance, which, which requires implementation and reporting. And then, the main initiative is this online permitting. So, in this budget, this is one where you'll see a little bit more change here. And I want to emphasize that while the revenues are projected to go up a lot, that's largely related to some key permits, such as the YouTube Phase 1 entitlement, which at this point in time, they're, they anticipate submitting in the next few months. So, we both see an infusion of revenue when the permit is submitted, but also when the permit is issued. And I feel pretty comfortable based on what I know, at this point in time, that the YouTube Phase 1 permit will be both submitted and issued in the next fiscal year. Some of the other projects that I've held off on, on including them in this revenue just because the timeline is a little more uncertain. Again, we're conservative here, but when you see an increase here, part of it is sort of a fiscal year infusion, but that money is used to pay for operating expenses in future years. On the expenditure side, it went up about $175,000. That's the result of moving the planner position to this budget because the revenue is increasing in this budget, and it's really paying for the cost of that planner position. As you'll see here, the general fund subsidy is sort of going in the opposite direction, where this is a division that will pay into the general fund, and that is a healthy thing. But as part of the fee study, we will examine that in a little more detail and report back to you when that fee study is complete. So, for the, for the budget changes, I mentioned some of them. But again, we're going to see an increase in the permit revenue. Those are projects in the pipeline. And as Director DiMartini emphasized earlier, we have made really conservative assumptions there, only with sort of known projects in the pipeline. That does increase the demand for work, and at this point, we haven't added, for example, any inspector positions or sort of waiting to the point in time when we know the inspector load is going to change, and then we may come back to you at that point. But as of right now, we can accommodate the work with the staff that you see in the budget, especially with the enhancements. I want to emphasize with enhancements, we, when we shift from a consultant position to a city staff position, we, within this department, are able to save a lot. So, for example, with the counter-tech position, which was one of the enhancements, by shifting from a consultant to a limited-term city position, there's an estimated cost savings of $55,000 annually. Many of the consultants within this field charge a very expensive amount. And so, to the extent we can, for limited terms, shift, shift those costs, it will benefit the budget. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for the director? No? Marty?
Yeah. Hi, good afternoon. So, yeah, that's, this is a lot of money, the increase, and it's good to see. So, can you just explain one more time about how that shift from the consultant to the, to the limited term, that's kind of the newer thing that we are pursuing, right? Because we normally have like CSG or another permit company do our infilling of the, a number of different positions. So, are we talking about changing that model to go to this limited, limited-term employee that has a, gets hired individually? Or how, what are we, help me, help me understand that, I'm sorry.
Sure. So, I'll just give you one example with the counter-tech position. And I want to emphasize, that has been a one-time enhancement that's been approved every year for a series of years. It hasn't always been reflected in this amount. So, the counter-tech, for example, last year, and you might remember the contract that came before you, the budget amount, I think, was $135,200. And that, that is based on paying them out at a certain hourly rate. And that hourly rate includes sort of their overhead and their consultant fee, and it's, it's higher than what we would pay a normal city staffer even fully burdened. So, by shifting it to a two-year limited-term position, which would just be two years, and if for some reason, you know, we needed it longer, we would revisit it at that point. But it would shift the cost, and the cost in the budget is $79,955 is sort of the base. So, that's a difference of, I think, about $50,000. So, in some cases, it can save a lot. In some cases, sometimes the consultant fee is on par with maybe city staffer, or you, you don't need them full-time. But around development review, if we, if we need someone full-time, sometimes their hourly rate can be, sometimes it's $80. But frankly, I got a quote from a consultant recently, it was $125 an hour. So, if you're paying that 40, 40 hours a week, even with maybe two weeks vacation, a week a sick leave, you're pushing almost $200,000 a year in consultant costs. So, it's not, it's not a stable revenue or expenditure approach.
That's right.
And many conversations on this topic, so they can also give you some information.
No. Well, so, Darcy did a great job articulating that example. I think on a higher level, I like to think of it as there are three types of service delivery methods. One, you can have a full-time city employee, and we all know what that is, right? Permanent position. Or you can contract, and you essentially go to a firm, and they have people that are their employees, and you contract for a service. And the charge you pay has a lot of overhead for the corporation, et cetera. Or there's the limited-term position, which is someone that works for you as an employer, but they're on a limited-term, essentially, contract position working for you directly. Now, in that case, the cost is typically lower than the going outside for a contractor, and the individual may actually make more money because there's not the corporate overhead that can be charged. And so, there's a little delta where the employer can make money. And so, there are three various types here in various divisions and departments. We use all three. And what we're articulating is moving from the contractual model to a two-year limited-term model. I will caveat that that comes at, it is a good strategy, and we are recommending it. It does come at a operational risk, because you can advertise for that position and not find that person in your region and your locality that will say, I will work for you essentially for two years, knowing that I, I won't have a position in two years. Because we, we have to articulate that clearly, so there are... And what we're articulating is moving from the contractual model to a two-year limited-term model. I will caveat that that comes at, it is a good strategy, and we are recommending it. It does come at a operational risk because you can advertise for that position and not find that person in your region, in your locality, that will say, "I will work for you essentially for two years, knowing that I, I won't have a position in two years." Because we, we have to articulate that clearly, so there are not claims that they're a full-time position and, and subsequent to all, all the benefits of a full-time position. And so sometimes you will find people that will take those positions, they'll do it for a little bit, and then the first full-time job that comes along, they're gone. Other times, you'll find someone that says, "You know what? I'm retired from another agency, not a CalPERS agency. I'll work for you for two years because I'm retired, but I really don't want to stop working. Or I'm mid-career, and I'll work for you if, if you, if you can do 32 hours and not 40, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a two-year commitment." And so we use all, all, all three types, and what we're recommending is that we go to limited term here.
How, how receptive was our bargaining units to that agreement?
So we do not run budgetary decisions via the bargaining groups. We do have a practice of using all three scenarios, and so we do not see this change conflicting with any of our collective bargaining unit agreements.
Do the chair?
Michael. To follow up on Marty's questions, I think the, the last time we talked about limited-term positions, I asked if we had a, a policy that defined basically what all the parameters were around that, and I don't think that we did. And I was wondering if we had made any progress toward defining any limits around, you know, can, can a limited term be extended? Is there absolute limit? Can they be converted? What benefits are associated? All those good things.
So, sure. So we do not have our own policies, but we do have to follow the CalPERS rules. And so if the position is above the either ACA, American, American Affordable Care Act, we have to provide them with full-time health insurance. And if it is above, I think, the 32-hour requirement for CalPERS, they have to be provided with the, their benefits for the two-year position that they're with us. And so we do comply with all applicable, both federal and state rules for those positions. We don't have a local policy that mirrors that, but we do follow those rules.
So would those people accrue some sort of civil service credit for their time?
Sure. I'll, I'll let our HR director, Assistant City Manager, answer.
The bargaining unit does, does allow for employees who are temporary to join the, to join the bargaining unit, so they would get all the benefits as a regular employee does, including CalPERS credits, including a pension for that two-year limited term.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions to the director? All right, thank you. We'll move on to community services, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Joanne Magrini, Community Services Director. Community Services is comprised of several different divisions: recreation, library, senior services, parks, and buildings and facilities. Our mission is to provide quality programs, services, and spaces to benefit the health and well-being of the community through delivery of recreation, senior, and library services, and the maintenance of city parks and facilities. We'll start with recreation. The Recreation Department is comprised of 4.9 full-time staff. I want to just kind of take a moment to explain why there are some oddities with the breakdown. My position, as well as the executive assistant and the ACSR Account and Customer Service Representative positions are actually spread out over the five divisions. So that's why there's some goofy numbers up there that you'll see in the next few slides. Currently, we are operating without the Account and Customer Service Representative position being filled, and depending on the time of year, there are about 100 part-time staff employed at any one time to support the programs and services offered. The department also supports Parks and Recreation Commission, and over the past year, the Rec Department has accommodated 451 students and after-school programs, offered 28 special events, many of which are free to the community, and had over 2,100 participants in summer camps. Some of this year's major accomplishments include the expansion of the After-School Adventures Program. This is one of the most important and vital services we offer to our community. With the recent closure of El Crystal School, we were able to accommodate additional students at both Allen and John Muir Schools. We also provide staff for the Aces After-School Education and Safety Program. This is a grant-funded program in conjunction with the school district, and it serves 186 students at both Allen and Bel Air Schools. As I mentioned before, a total of 451 participants are enrolled at both after-school programs hosted at six different school sites throughout the city. Staff have continued to work with the many different stakeholders to contribute to the schematic design of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. There have been multiple internal steering and advisory board committee meetings with Group Four Architects and their team of consultants, and Griffin Structures, our project management team, to determine what will be included in the design and programming of the new facility, and many other acts, aspects, such as improving the creek and expanding parking in City Park. And then a new program registration and reservation software was implemented in February of 2018. This new software has a mobile device application and allows for language translation. The new software has enabled the community to sign up for programs and services without having to physically come in person to register. The aim of, the, the aim with the software was to make the registration process more accessible and user-friendly, and it seems to have been successful with about half of all registrations happening online. Some of the strategic initiatives for the upcoming year include moving into the next phase of the RAC project with development of construction documents. In addition, in collaboration with Griffin Structures and Group Four, staff have been working to secure a temporary site to continue to accommodate as many programs and services as possible once construction starts later this year. Staff continue to work with Civic Rec, our software, our registration software vendor, to provide automatic payment renewal, a feature most needed for the After-School Adventure Program monthly registration process. And we think we have it fixed, but time will tell. We have implemented a cost-effective and user-friendly scheduling software that helps to manage, facilitate, and schedule staff more efficiently and effectively. The software is currently being used for our facility supervisors at both the Rec and Senior Centers, and will be rolled out to the summer camp and aquatic staff this summer. The software allows professional staff to communicate quickly when there are staffing deficiencies and challenges. Notable changes, sorry. Notable changes to the budget include an increase in revenue for the After-School Adventures Program, with fees being increased by $20 a month as of February 2019. Aquatic sports and other revenues were adjusted to more accurately reflect what we are projected to bring in, and as of January 1st, the minimum wage will increase by a dollar an hour, and this will affect more than the 100 part-time staff we employ. The city manager mentioned the enhancement request for Community Day. I just want to point out that the funding needed can fluctuate based on sponsorships and wristband sales. I am pleased to announce that this year, Community Service has been able to raise $10,000 in sponsorship money for the event, and the Community Foundation was able to secure and raise $21,500 for the event. Wristband sales fluctuate anywhere between $9,000 and $12,000, just depending on how many people actually turn out for the event. I think on the low end, we've had nine; on the high end, we've had 12. So that will affect the amount of money that is subsidized for this program, or sorry, for this event. Before I answer any questions, if I could just move on to the next slide about the RAC. A quick rundown of how the Recreation and Aquatic Center Project came to be. It all began with the tragic PG&E pipeline explosion in 2010. Part of the restitution included rebuilding the Crestmore Neighborhood. The San Bruno Community, Community Foundation was formed and allocated $50 million to build a new Recreation and Aquatic Center for the community. Conceptual design is complete with input from residents, including an indoor pool, gymnasium, fitness and weight area, classrooms, and staff offices. Schematic design is underway and should be completed later this year, and construction is, is expected to begin in late 2020. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about recreation.
Any questions to the director on recreation? If not, let's go to parks.
Moving on to the parks. The Parks Department also supports the Park and Recreation Commission and supports the Beautification Task Force Events. There are 15.05, or maybe .55, we're going to debate that later, with one field supervisor, three leads, eight maintenance workers, two tree crew, and .5 utility crew. And then there are three part-time staff in this division. Currently, we have two open positions, one lead and one maintenance worker. They're collectively responsible for maintaining 95 acres of landscape area at city parks, buildings, school sites, and athletic fields, and maintaining over seven linear miles of medians. Staff coordinate with the Fire Department on fire mitigation strategies and implementation in the 120 acres of open space in the city, as well as work in partnership with public works in responding to downed trees during storms. The two tree crew, our staff, are responsible for the care of over 6,700 city trees. In the past eight months, they have responded to over 100 tree-related Acela SB response inquiries. Their duties include pruning, pollarding, removals, and watering of these trees, with the exception of the routine scheduled maintenance done by West Coast Arborist annually in the winter. This department is responsible for 16 parks, with the recent completed construction and ribbon-cutting of the Earl Glenview Park in Crestmore Neighborhood in October of 2018 that I was honored to be a part of. This park has been open for over six months, and it has been well-received and is highly utilized by the residents. We continue to receive positive feedback about the features and maintenance of the park. A little library was installed at the upper park shortly after the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and staff occasionally see parents and grandparents sitting with their children, reading on many of the memorial benches at the park. This past year, staff also oversaw the completion of the restoration of the park pathways at both Grundy and Commodore Parks. The path, pathways were re-asphalated and slurry sealed to provide safe and accessible access to these parks. As a result of regular wear and tear, in addition to tree roots uplifting the pavement, park pathways, eventually all city parks will be in need of this type of repair. There was a proposed rotation of pathway renovations with next year slated to repair Pacific, I'm sorry, Pacific Heights Park. Unfortunately, due to budget restraints, that project is currently unfunded. This year, staff collaborated with the Public Works Department to complete the final phase and installation of landscaping improvements in the medians of San Bruno Avenue. Some of the strategic initiatives for the Park Department this coming year include supporting the Commodore Park Master Plan and Revitalization, as well as continuing to facilitate the design and construction of Florida Avenue Park. Staff are currently working on applying for a grant that would help provide additional funding for the escalating costs due to the delay of the project. This year, staff collaborated with West Coast Arborist for a grant-sponsored tree planting program. This program allows for 200 San Bruno residents to sign up and receive a free private tree. The marketing efforts for this program in a few short months have paid off, with 77 people registering through the portal to receive a tree. There are several more months to register, with the tree planting scheduled to occur in mid-September. Notable changes to the budget include an addition of a full-time manager position that I will elaborate on when we review the Building and Facility section. There are attrition savings due to the two open positions and a minor, minor increased expenditures for playground fiber, dog waste bags, and employee uniform service. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions, Director, on parks? Marty?
Yes, good afternoon. It's, yes, 3 o'clock now. All right. So West Coast Arborist, the overall response from, from their pollarding services, I just wonder if you can speak, speak a little bit about it?
So this is my first year as the Community Services Director, and it was very challenging to work through some of the information that was put together and provided to me. I didn't get the chart of how the rotations were happening, but the, the city is on a four-year, a four-year cycle for the pruning and pollarding of different sections. So now I have that map, and I know what the schedule is. But we issued door hangers to provide to residents about the pollarding and pruning happening. I, I'll have to say that we did receive some complaints, and we did rectify that immediately with West Coast Arborist, and they were very responsive in coming out. And I think that the majority of the residents were happy. We, of course, got a couple of complaints, but took care of them right away, and they did the work fairly quickly over, I think, a three- or four-week process, and it was well-received, I think, by most residents.
Great. And I concur. We, I got some complaints early on, but normally when you start a new project and with a new contractor, there might be a little bit of a hiccup, and I think it eventually proved that it was successful. My question and concern is the overgrown trees that need service, at some point, we have to start budgeting for, for that, and we could only defer budgets for so long. There was a tree inventory and, and assessment at some certain point, and I, and I don't have the information in front of me about, but not all of them were trimmed. And so I was thinking of where, what do, how much money do we need to start allocating on a more yearly basis so that we don't fall too far behind?
So I think there was some gap in getting West Coast Arborist on board, and I think that we're starting to meet, we're finally starting to meet the cadence that's needed. We also need to determine an assessment of trees needed, but with the limited staff, it's very hard because they're constantly just responding to things. So again, I think that we need to be more proactive in determining what issues are out there. But I also want to let you know, part of the contract with West Coast Arborist is to update the tree inventory, and they are doing that, and that is where I can get the numbers for how many trees we have. And so as they're assessing them, they can bring them to our attention if they do need additional work, even though they're not on their cycle. They can bring that to our attention because we're checking what they're putting into the system, and they take pictures of the trees, determine the species, the height, and all kinds of things. So we, we are checking that, so we will find trees that need to be addressed immediately as that is, that's put in the system.
And as for the budget that we would need going forward, I mean, how much do you have to, to deal with that? Is it, I mean?
I think we're on the second year of the four-year contract that we have with West Coast Arborist, and I think, like I said, I think there was a gap before this started. So I think once we get to the fourth year of the rotation, we should be pretty set, and there is money already set aside in the budget for that.
Right. The pollarding is, I'm okay with that. I think it's, it's on its route, route, that it's, it's ongoing. My concern is, is the trees that are under, in various neighborhoods where they, they should be assessed and maybe taken care of, if not, cut. There was a report a while ago, I believe it was two years ago, that, that indicated a number of the trees that we, we just didn't have the budget for.
Right.
And at some point, we need to budget for it because...
I, I think that there are, there's one question with potentially two linked answers. One is, we just entered into a four-year pollarding cycle. We need to go through that full cycle to see, okay, is four years the right cadence? And then, I think, right now, we have trees that are overgrown, that are, sometimes they, they grow so much that they're in the utility maintenance quarter, so we have to have PG&E come out and, and cut before we can cut. And there very well may be an inventory of trees or a three-year cycle that we need to be on to, to have that appropriate maintenance. We're trying to do the backlog now, and I think that figure that you're looking for of, boy, if we just had an extra $100,000, I'm pulling it out, that would kind of maintain all of our trees in a pollarding cycle and a pruning cycle where we wouldn't have the amount of complaints that we have now. What I'll tell you is, we don't have that figure. That is part of the West Coast Arborist contract to do that inventory and, and to get on this cycle. We certainly have a lot of deferred maintenance in our tree inventory. And then I think the other anecdotal thing that I'll say from the complaints that I receive is, four years, whether that's the right cycle, given the budget constraints and, and the tree growth, okay, but sometimes people forget, once your tree hasn't been cut in four years, what a pollarding does, and it's a very significant haircut. And so I do think that there is a portion of our community that would say, "Boy, I'd love not, not to have a four-year pollarding, and just trim it a little bit every year." And all of that comes with added costs and expenses, and it's a part of our infrastructure, urban forestry backlog.
So this is one item that, in regards to some of Marty's things... So, this is one item that, in regards to some of Marty's things, is that did come before us and was not supported by the local union because it was outsourcing. And so, the majority of the council went forward with this contract which we're into. My question would be, I believe it was on a four-year cycle prior to it being outsourced from our labor and our Teamsters. And so, now we're on this cycle, and I think, yes, I think one thing is, when they see what the result is, which is doing what they're supposed to do, it is rather a shock to folks in the neighborhood, that it's not like getting a haircut, it's getting a buzz.
Shaved.
Or shaved, yeah. So, and I'm wondering, too, if that is the right cycle, for example, if we are keeping up with that. I know Marty was just saying, if we give more money, so that'd be more money to the consultant to do the job, because, again, what we outsourced obviously isn't meeting the need. So, I know it's a deeper discussion, but I just wanted to bring some of the historical perspective, which I can appreciate you getting up to speed and us midway in that contract to actually see the end results. Anything else?
To the chair.
Yes.
So, just a couple of questions on some of the line items. Operating supplies, you went up about twenty thousand dollars, and it just seems like the notes here are some sort of common supplies from foods to safety. Is there something unique in that item, line item? Were we not really covering costs or making...
So, yeah, I believe that it was under-budgeted in previous years.
And then, just to double cost and, it's a new contract, but, I mean...
Well, currently, our supervisors, our field supervisors have flip phones, which are not the most technologically savvy when they're in the field, so I think we upped that to hopefully get some new equipment and be able to take photos and utilize online services while they're in the field.
Well-spent funding.
Okay, why don't we move on to the senior center, please?
The senior center is comprised of three point six five full-time staff, with the food services position vacant the last eight months. There are ten part-time staff and over a hundred and fifty volunteers. This department supports the senior advisory board. Senior services include a daily lunch program that serves over twenty-five thousand lunches a year, hosts twenty-six special events, and offers twenty-nine trips annually. Over five thousand participants monthly attend a wide range of fitness activities, educational and enrichment classes. I must say, I am quite impressed with the number and quality of the programs and services the city provides to the senior population with an annual attendance of over seventy thousand. It is well-known and highly regarded by seniors up and down the peninsula. The facility continues its recovery from the vehicle accident that occurred in June of 2017, damaging a portion of the building. This year, the lift and curtains were installed to finish the repairs to the stage area of the multipurpose room. A bench was dedicated, and a memorial bocce ball tournament was held in honor of Ken Kreisel, a longtime volunteer at the senior center, and was very well-attended. New hula dance has been class, I'm sorry, a new hula dance class has been incorporated to the mini-class offerings. New performances, safety demonstrations, and educational seminars continue to be offered and have helped to increase attendance and participation at the daily lunch program. Some of the strategic initiatives for the senior center this year: Staff will work to complete the first year's recommended ADA transition plan. Additional renovations in collaboration with the community development department. Public works and facilities include the restriping of the parking lot and the construction of the new trash enclosure with the installation of safety bollards. Staff will introduce and market the charitable bequest program. A postcard will be made available in response to inquiries about including the city in a person's will or living trust. And we will also work to increase the number of volunteer supporter memberships. Notable changes to the budget include the salary step, health, and pension increases, and the minimum wage increase for the small number of part-time staff. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the director? Laura? Marty?
Does the restriping of the parking lot include a slurry of the parking lot?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, because I just, I've noticed this, the sort of near the main entrance is really kind of starting to break up, and with seniors, with canes and whatnot, I think that it's dangerous. And then, another question is, what about the enclosure for the garbage after that construction accident? It seems like that area sort of hasn't fully been completed, or has it been completed now?
So, my understanding is that the interim director declined having the insurance follow-up and finish that project, and decided to have staff take that project on themselves. So, we're working with Public Works and Community Development to do the design for that area, and so, we're in the middle of that process currently.
Thank you.
Yep.
Marty?
So, I hear great things about our senior center, so, but I don't really have any other comments on that, and I apologize for not bringing this up sooner about the Lara Field project. And would this be the appropriate time when looking at the city manager for some concurrence to bring this forward?
The Tottenlara project would be a capital project, so when we get into the capital improvement program.
All right, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, if not, we'll move on to the library.
The library is comprised of seven point eight five full-time staff and thirteen part-time staff. The department supports Culture and Arts Commission. The library services include access to eBooks, the homework center, video streaming services, seasonal reading programs, and offers three hundred and fifty special programs annually. It is estimated that over two hundred and fifty thousand books will be checked out this year. Staff continue to explore and implement technology to strengthen community connections and engagement with the programs and services we offer. The library has had many accomplishments this year, but we'll cover just a few. The library conducted weekly outreach visits to the senior center to issue library cards, check-out materials, and provide information about the library to two hundred and thirty-five seniors. With the large success of the summer reading program with over three thousand participants, staff introduced the winter reading program, offering encouragement and incentives to people to read during the months of December and January. Staff launched the automated renewals program, which will automatically, which automatically renews checked-out library materials through the library's computer system. This is also a strategic initiative. Staff have received a lot of positive feedback from residents since the implementation of this program. The other strategic initiatives for the library include a 3D printing program. In an effort to encourage community members to learn about new and emerging technologies, the library is planning to offer a 3D printer for public use. The Food for Fines program allowed library patrons to, with outstanding overdue fines, to donate non-perishable food items in exchange for the removal of their fines. A hundred and fourteen patrons participated and resulted in the waiving of twelve hundred dollars of overdue fines. The program was a success with a donation of eight hundred and ninety-six pounds of food to Second Harvest. Staff intends to offer the program again for the upcoming holiday season. Finally, with grant funds, the library was able to install three new wireless access points and a charging station, allowing patrons improved system responsiveness and a place to charge their devices. Notable changes to the budget include the overdue fines no longer assessed on whole materials that are filled through the county library system, the salary step, health, and pension increases, as well as minimal increases for the part-time staff with the increase for minimum wage. With the increased popularity of eBooks, San Bruno Library, through its membership with the PLS, will purchase additional book titles. An additional Saturday programming will double the number of public Saturday programs for both adults and children. And in addition, there will be Saturday deliveries resulting in holds being filled faster. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the director on library? Mary?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just want to comment that we, in our little library, are bucking the national trend, and the national trend is to check out fewer and fewer actual physical books and to either not go to the library at all or to use eBooks. And through the figures here, we're doing more than that, and I think that's fabulous. And just to kind of put it in perspective, our little library checks out eight hundred books a day on average. Eight hundred books, that's just the books. That's fabulous. So, I just want to, and before we go, because the next little thing before we get to enterprise funds is non-departmental, I just want to compliment everybody. I mean, we, as you go through this, we do a fabulous job. There's so few of you, and you do so much, and you really make the city work, so thank you.
Anything, Michael? Laura? Marty? Okay, so let's go to non-departmental. Keith, you gonna take that? Or are we gonna skip that?
Sure, so now, we'll go to our enterprise funds.
Is there anything you want to say on the non-departmental or not?
Oh, we don't, we didn't, I'm sorry, we didn't prepare a presentation for the non-departmental. We are happy to answer any questions about non-departmental. But non-departmental has a number of things. There are some position allocations to that, but also, it's where our credit card fees go, a number of utility payments, some intergovernmental charges, as well as debt service, and so, it's mainly an accounting thing.
Yeah.
And just so, and because it's being recorded, I want, in case people are wondering themselves, what does it mean?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Let's move on to enterprise.
Enterprise, Jimmy Tan, our director, to talk about the water department.
Great, thanks. Good afternoon again, council members, mayor. The water division, as you can see there, it shows seventeen point nine five FTEs, but that's not really the number of employees that we have in the water division, it's much less, but that's the budgeted number in the budget. As far as what the water division does, it's responsible for the operations and maintenance of the water division, water distribution system and supply. The division maintains and operates, you know, eight storage tanks, eight pump stations, about a hundred miles of pipelines. And so, you know, we also participate in the water conservation programs, and we also ensure that the water main breaks and leaks that we have are repaired as soon as we can so that the businesses and residents will have continued water service. Since our infrastructure is more than a hundred years old, in certain locations, you know, we are still experiencing more leaks, and however, staff in the water division are immediately on-site to ensure the breaks are quickly repaired.
So, I'd like to present the five-year financial forecast, which I'll do for each of the four enterprise funds, and give a high-level summary on the financials as well. And so, for the water enterprise, you'll see what the five-year forecast looks like here. On the revenue side, it does take into consideration the existing utility customers with the planned five percent rate increase that will take effect on July first in the nineteen-twenty budget cycle. And then, the fifth and final rate increase that council approved will take effect on July first of 2020. So, you'll see the five percent rate increase for the revenues into nineteen-twenty and then into 2021, and then flat thereafter. And then, on the revenue side, will also includes an assumption for the additional capacity charges for the planned development projects in the pipeline, as I mentioned earlier. On the expenditure side, you'll see some significant spiking in nineteen-twenty budget primarily due to the capital improvement program with some planned water capital projects. And so, that shows some pressure on the fund, dropping its fund balance pretty substantially into nineteen-twenty to 2021, and then rebounding as we go into the out-years. And so, this trend is, it's pressure into 2021, but it's still healthy in that there's still a fairly sizable fund balance in the fund to sustain both ongoing operations and the capital improvement program.
And just note the scale on this graph, to fit in everything, begins at five billion, and so, when you see that depression, there's still, it doesn't begin at zero.
Right.
To the chair? Before we leave this one, can you explain the dip in the revenue line? Why does it go down between those years?
Yeah, I think there was some one-time revenue in nineteen-twenty that goes away, and I have to go back and look specifically, but I think it was in our pipeline project assumption for the development projects.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Connection fees. Oh, the connection fees, yeah, for projects coming online. Okay, so then, this table here summarizes the financials in the fund. It shows the beginning fund balances, in nineteen-twenty being a healthy twenty-six million dollar fund balance. Operating revenues coming in at just over sixteen million, and then, total operating expenditure is just over ten million, with a surplus, surplus result of just over six million. And again, that surplus is planned, and that's a normal activity to see in this fund, because a lot of that surplus goes to fund the capital improvement program. And because of just the nature of when these projects are planned and come online, you'll see some big ebbs and flows of when the capital projects get programmed. And in nineteen-twenty, there's a really large capital improvement program, budget of eighteen point nine million, bringing the ending fund balance down to fourteen point five. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Jimmy to talk about the operation.
Thanks. Regards to the accomplishments, some of them includes the completion of the annual water report and a water loss audit, which was submitted to the water board. The other is completion of the consumer confidence report newsletter, which is sent to our residents, and this information included water usage and conservation programs in there. And the overall initiatives that we have here are just to continue to replace the old infrastructure. A lot of the city water pipelines and tanks and pump stations are old, and they need to be replaced, so a lot of the work programs are indicated on the slide there. This includes the construction of the Cunningham Water Tank, the design of the Stunidge Ridge Tank, which is upcoming here in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. The several pressure-regulating stations will be replaced. Water pump stations are being evaluated to ensure that it has the capability to function during an emergency. And permanent standby generators are being included at these water pump stations as well. And multiple water main replacement projects are underway, and we have those water pipelines in the Cupid Row area that will be replaced in this coming year. Regards to the water budget, there are some proposed changes. Again, increasing, as the finance director mentioned, there is an increase in revenue generated from the five percent rate increase and higher returns on investments. There are some attrition savings due to vacancy of one lead worker position, and there are also some budget increase regards to the salary step and health and pension cost. Regards to the enhancement, there are multiple enhancements. As the city manager mentioned during the presentation, we have a one-time budget enhancement for a two hundred thousand dollars to complete the water master plan update. The previous water master plan was completed in 2012, and it's normally updated every five years. The master plan will identify the program and for the long-term strategies for improving the water system performance to meet existing and future flows for the next five to ten years. And they'll do additional hydraulic analysis to update the water demand, demand projections, as well as the determining, you know, whether any of the pipelines' locations needs to be upsized in terms of for fire flow demand needs. The other is the one-time budget for a hundred thousand dollars to perform the tank inspections. Many of our steel water tanks are due for maintenance. We have a total of eight water tanks, and one has already been replaced, and we replaced another one this fiscal year. So, the remaining tanks would need to be inspected and cleaned, and this budget allows for the cleaning of the tanks and sediment removal as well. Another enhancement, one-time enhancement includes the completion of the drinking water emergency response plan, which is about eighty thousand dollars. This response plan defines how the city will respond to emergency or disaster that are likely to affect us during a normal day operations of the distribution system. So, this response plan needs to be updated every five years as well, and so, that's something that we're doing in our divisions. The city also has a leak detection assessment of the water mains, which is required by the state. Fifty thousand dollars of that is being allocated to do the work. An additional allocation of two hundred thousand dollars is being set aside for the contractual repairs if these leaks are found through the leak detection, and so, we'll have to go back and repair these leaks from the analysis. And lastly, there's also an ongoing cost that we're proposing to include for the a hundred thousand dollars for concrete repairs as well. Excuse me. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Questions of the director in regards to water? Yeah? Marty? And Laura?
Looking at page two hundred and one, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar reduction for water from SF Water, I just wonder if you could just explain... I was wondering if you could just explain what that, how did, how did we get that or what? That's all? Just wondered.
Yeah, so that's, this is a projection, reduction for two-point-four million dollars there from two-point-six. And what that is, is that the city is actually part of the GSR, the groundwater storage and recovery. So, we're actually getting some credit back, new credit back through our bills. So, there's a reduction of the, you know, the billing for that.
Okay. So, the question I have, recalling from when we increased the, the water rates, it was based on a projected amount of development that was going to be occurring over the five-year period of the rate increases, or five years, right?
Five years.
And those, those numbers were, I believe, were around twenty-five units per year for the first X amount of years. And now that we're seeing that the development is coming, because we can't budget it when we don't really know, and that's part of the problem in budgeting, it's a moving target. So, I was curious, it was a nice spreadsheet, and it's before you were here, Keith. So, of course, you're not, maybe, maybe you're not aware of it. But I was wondering how or when staff will be re-examining that to determine that we are on target and that if we're getting these additional revenues in with permits and, and service charges, is it really necessary to continue with the five percent increases over the remaining years for, for water and wastewater? So, I'm not expecting to give that answer now, but I would think that at some point that we should start looking at it as the development and capacity charges are coming in. And now that we have development impact fees at some point coming in, how, how that blends in to, to pay for that infrastructure, which was accounted for in those rate studies.
Fair. So, the rate study will be looked at, or in totality, that will be looked at the next time we do a rate study. I think part of your statement, I think to truly do what you're asking, there are a couple of things that kind of need to be bear, bear in mind. One, development impact fees is development paying for their fair share, not paying for our deferred maintenance on a system that we already have. And so, while the rate study did include a factor of new connections coming online, the majority of those rate increases and those charges were based on paying for the deferred maintenance that we have for the rest of the city. And so, like the director said, we do have pipes that are over a hundred years old and, and we are in the process and the capital budget shows kind of the expenditure of those funds to improve those. That will not change with new development. New development does pay impact fees to pay their fair share and they pay connection charges. But the next time we do a rate study, all of that will be looked at in totality. But the vast majority of the rate that goes to support capital improvement projects is for the existing city. And so, it is likely that you can't push that cost on or, or reduce that cost because you have new development. We still have to find a way to fund the, those repairs. And I, just anecdotally, I can tell you, because staff frequently informs me of when we have water main breaks, and they're quite frequent. And so, I do want to give our staff credit for all the work that they do to kind of keep the system humming along until we can have the funds and do those projects. Because, I mean, literally today, we had one on, on Rollingwood. And there are, I wouldn't say that there's one every week, but to have three in a week is not surprising sometimes. And so, it is something that we need to continue to progress toward.
Just to add on to what the city manager said, I know initially when we were doing, when we did the rate study, we were looking at double-digit rate increase. And the reason why the rates were brought down to five percent is because the city floated the bonds. And that, and, you know, that's because of the needs in our, to improve our water infrastructure. So, going forward, after the, the, you know, the next rate study has been performed, I think we have to determine whether five percent is an adequate number or the city would have to float additional bonds to perform any, any of these CIP projects.
Thank you for that. And lastly, at some point, if we can get an update of a running percentage of our replacement, I know, I know we're in the very low amount because we have so much water mains and sewer mains that need to be replaced. But as we, as we mentioned in our reports that we need to replace them all, I think it would be beneficial to, to include what percentage we are at and how much we have to go to, to do in the future. Thank you.
Jimmy, good, good report. Just to go back to the line item on the increase in contractual services. And you mentioned that that's due to increase in repairs due to water loss. That's a state mandated, they're really coming down hard this year where they're like, you can give us a percentage of sort of miscellaneous, but that's not good enough for them. They really want to know the, the fine details. And so, is that, the city's sort of amping up this program to really inspect our system to understand where our water loss is and then therefore make repairs? Is that?
That's correct. And so, the city's gonna, planning to hire a consultant to perform the study for us. And upon the determination where the locations are, we would have to go out there and repair them right away, right? So, because once we know about it, once we know, we have to repair them. So, this is just an anticipated need and we just don't know how much of this two-hundred thousand dollars we'll be spending for, for repairs.
Thank you. And then, another question. I know that, that the city is, you know, has installed smart meters and so, residents can really kind of get on an application and see what's going on in terms of water usage. But I, I would assume that there are a majority of residents who don't, right? They don't take the time to develop the online login and go on and see. So, does staff actually monitor that? And if they see where there's been a continuous usage after twenty-four hours, then they're proactive with that, that system that we've been, we've installed, we've spent a lot of money on, to proactively go out and actually respond to those?
That's correct.
Yes, Esther?
Actually, that's part of the, I don't know if I can reach this. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, that's part of the utility billing. So, when people come in and they ask about their water, we encourage them to sign up for it. And we do actually show them how to use it. That's one of the things that I'm really kind of pushing out.
Great. Thank you so much.
Through the chair?
Hi, Mary.
I, I think also, I didn't sign up for it, but I left my lawn hose on one time overnight. And the next day, there was a notice on my door saying, "We've noticed unusually high water usage. You need to check out your stuff." So, it, it, it just happens and it's fabulous.
Anything else for the director on this?
I think somebody caught it, but we don't always catch it. It's a, you know, it's a good catch that they saw you had extreme use of water. And it was good that they could find you because it could have been a leak. So, the water department will probably come out and turn it off if needed if there was some kind of leak.
Thank you. Next?
Okay, we're wastewater division. Again, just wanted to note that, you know, we don't have sixteen point eight FTEs within the division. It's much less than that in the operating division. Regarding to the, the work, you know, the wastewater division is responsible for the wastewater collection and system throughout the city for all the sewer mains, manholes, and six pump stations. So, this division provides preventative maintenance on sewer pipelines and pump stations and includes, you know, flushing the lines, CCTV video inspections, cleaning the manholes, pump maintenance and rotting of the sewer pipelines. And so...
Thanks, Jimmy. So, similar to the water enterprise fund, here's the long-range financial forecast for the wastewater enterprise fund. And you'll actually see a really similar trajectory of both revenues and expenditures with one-time big spikes in the nineteen twenty budget and then coming back down in 2021. Again, on the revenue side, we fold in the five percent rate increase that's anticipated on July first, just about a month away, and then again in fiscal year 2021. So, and again, on the expenditure side, a majority of the impact on the expenditures is the aggressive capital improvement program. So, there are some large capital expenditures planned in the nineteen twenty budget that then go away in the, in the following year. So, in 2021, we'll be sort of at the low point on the fund balance. Again, the fund balance is around the five million dollar number there. So, it's not low where it's problematic. But then again, it will slowly and gradually ramp up in the out-years. So, this is the trajectory of the, the revenues and expenditures and the impact on the fund balance over the five-year planning horizon. So, similarly, the fund balance at the beginning of, of the proposed budget year is around twenty point seven million dollars with total annual operating revenues of about eighteen point six. Operating expenditures coming in at only around nine million dollars. So, that leaves a healthy annual surplus of just over nine point five million dollars. But again, there's a really robust capital improvement program in the wastewater division. So, they're planning on expending about fourteen point eight million dollars of CIP, bringing the ending fund balance down to about fifteen point four million dollars at the end of the budget year.
I'll just congratulate the city council, this one or the prior one, any of you that were there prior when the rate increases happened. It's not an easy thing to do, but in at least my prior experience, having a, two enterprise funds with the resources to do the capital projects is a good thing. And, and so, I know it comes out of pain to the ratepayers, but in your duty to oversee and manage the system, it is prudent management. And so, we, we're, we're working at executing these projects. The other good news is that when we do the water and wastewater projects, those come with a treatment on the streets. And so, whether that is a slurry seal or some other work being done, that a lot of the streets that you oftentimes see paved, it's because there was just a water sewer replacement project. And so, that, that has a benefit to our roads as well.
Through the chair, thank you. Yeah, really quick on that. So, as we get into the outer years, we start seeing the, the fund balance grow again. And I'm wondering if we were to look at this same thing over like a twenty-year horizon, would we expect to see that fund balance getting really big until we're, we do big projects? Or would it become essentially flat at some point?
I think it's a great question and that's, I think that's the benefit of starting this process now. I mean, starting at a five-year time horizon gives us the ability to monitor the success of this forecasting methodology and see how accurate it is. So, next year, when I'm before you, I'll be able to articulate how accurate or inaccurate some of my assumptions were. And then, I think I'll be able to go out further. So, I'll start with five years and I can go out further to see how ten years looks. I will say, in prior experience, as you go out further and further, your assumptions become less and less reliable. So, we just have, I just have to be able to articulate the, the assumptions and we can talk about them. In the out-years, there might be other things that we haven't yet even talked about. There may be a need for an eventual additional rate increase. I'm sure there will be other capital improvement projects that will need to be planned and scoped out that aren't currently part of the financial forecast. We haven't gotten that far down the forecasting and the planning process yet beyond the five years. And so, I think there will be other pressures that will, that will change the forecasted fund balance.
And if we wanted to make some assumptions about when in the future we get to the point where we are doing major replacements again, because when we're done with this, most of the city will be brand-new. So, we waited a hundred years. We know a hundred years is too long to wait. So, maybe fifty years is a better horizon. So, do we want to have in fifty years enough money to take on a considerable amount of the work? And are we even allowed to accumulate that much capital without expending it? So, that's what I'm wondering, you know, how we, how we start planning for the future and so, we don't get into the same situation and have to do the, the massive rate increases all at once.
Right. Okay.
Just on the professional services, sixty-four oh one, there's an increase, it's an added enhancement request, ten thousand. Just wondering if there's more specific?
Yeah. I can, I can mention the enhancement. Oh, would you like me to finish?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, not a problem. In regards to the accomplishments, there's some that are highlighted on the slide there. The city experienced fewer sewer overflows than what is allowed by the San Francisco Baykeeper. City had a total of three overflows versus four allowed. Other accomplishment includes completing three hundred and sixty video inspections of sewer mains. The city CCTV truck, which the city purchased, you know, has been very beneficial for the city. Staff has been using the truck to investigate sewer mains and repair, and repairing those defects as soon as it's realized. And staff assisted this review of the sewer lateral inspections as well as part of the city's point-of-sale program and completed two hundred and twelve inspections. The overall initiatives, again, is similar to water, which is to further replace the critical aging sewer facilities. And the city is currently replacing two pump stations, Lomita Pump Station and Crestwood Pump Stations. There's, there's construction work going along San Antonio Road right now for the Lomita Pump Station. And many of the sewer main projects are also underway. The, the avenues project, as I mentioned earlier, within the, the Cupid Row will be happening fairly soon. The Crystal Springs Road Sewer Project, you may have been, you know, seen it. It's almost complete. The paving work is being, the trench paving work is being performed today until the remainder of the week. And then, and then the, the project is pretty much complete. There's also one last pump station, it's, which is being designed as well, which is the Crestwood Pump Station. Design will be completed in the next fiscal year for construction in, in 2021. So, in regards to the budget, again, some minor changes as well. The, it shows the revenues generated from the five percent rate increase and higher returns on investment. There's also attrition savings, again, similar to the water. Because we still have a vacancy in our wastewater manager position, which hasn't been filled, which is currently being performed by the deputy director, Mr. Bosch. There are also some budget increase in salary step, health and pension cost, and increase in operating capital costs for the water quality control plant. The plant currently has multiple large projects under construction, especially the wet weather improvements project that's, that's happening there at the Truman Plant. In regards to this, the sixty-four oh one, there is a ongoing, there is a budget enhancement request. So, it's an ongoing cost of fifteen thousand dollars for a state mandated air water quality assessment of diesel generators at the, these pump stations. And that's included as part of this, the budget. And there's no other budget request for that.
Sorry, to respond to council member Medina, your request about breaking out the CIP and the debt service, there is a, in the financial summary section of the budget book, there's a water enterprise, wastewater enterprise financial summary. And it does break out the line items for those in that, on that, it's on the page in our book. Give me just one second. Is there?
Uh, it is. Page eleven?
Page eleven. So, early.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's in the financial summary section. And what finance director DiMartini mentioned is that there's a breakdown of the debt and capital. And it's not just for that fund, it's in all of the funds in the financial summary section. So, it is there.
Got another question about the sewer main spot repairs and the necessary repairs that are, were part of the consent decree or the overall program of how many, how much progress have we made on, on the different levels of the type of sewer defects or offsets? I was wondering, where, where are we with the, with the total plan of repairing those locations? Because I see that you have a number of them reported, but how many still remain to be done over the years? I was wondering, I don't need that now, but at some point, having that information, I think, would be useful.
We'll do it. Okay. Other questions?
In regards to the stormwater budget, the, the stormwater division ensures that the city's drain inlets are clean and prevents cities from flooding. The division procures and provides sandbags to residents and businesses every year during winter and clean the storm grates, trash racks, regular street sweeping is performed in residential... Trash racks, regular street sweeping is performed in residential and commercial areas. And they also inspect hillside erosions during storm events, clean drain inlets, and reduce trash loading to the storm drain system, and perform also illegal dumping pickups as well. So, next.
Thank you, Jimmy. So here's the long-range financial forecast for the stormwater enterprise fund. And this, I broke this out into two separate graphs, because as mentioned earlier, indicated earlier, there's a projected fund deficit that I'm expecting in fiscal year 2021. We have a structural deficit in this enterprise fund, because there is not sustainable ongoing revenue sources to pay for the ongoing, not only the operating expenses, but any capital expenses as well. We just do not have enough ongoing annual revenue that comes into this fund to sustain the operation. The revenue that does come into the stormwater enterprise fund comes from the annual property tax roll, coordinated by the county. There's a rate assessment per property of $4.19 per thousand square feet of the property, and there's a minimum bill for each property of $46.16. That's the annual assessment for properties in San Bruno. It's just not enough to cover the required mandates to sustain the stormwater operation. And so you can see, in all the years of the forecast, expenditures will exceed the revenues. And staff have, I've worked very closely with staff to identify as much cost savings in the current fiscal year budget, and to make sure that we're only proposing required necessary expenditures in the 1920 proposed budget. And even with that, we're left with a really, really small fund balance, and then projecting the first deficit in this fund in 2021. So there is definitely a need for an ongoing recurring additional revenue stream to sustain this operation. If not, then we will be looking to other funding sources, primarily the general fund. And it's important to note that currently, any capital improvements for the stormwater system are currently budgeted out of the general fund capital reserve. So capital is already being funded through the general fund.
Yeah. And so all that red, can't happen. We can't run a negative fund balance, so we're gonna have to make some tough decisions coming up. And one of the things is to look at the parcel charge. I recently was going through one of the, our larger commercial properties for one of our major employers, and noticed that the annual charge was $1,000. So I quickly typed up an email to staff saying, "There must be a miscalculation. We can't possibly be charging them a $1,000 stormwater assessment fee." But in fact, we were, and that's what our rate allows. And so we need to take a look at our rates and see where we can increase those rates appropriately, because the system is underfunded, and it's significantly underfunded, and this can't happen. And I repeat it probably too much, but we have that Spyglass project that's coming up that's 1.5 million. And it immediately takes us in the red, and what will likely happen is, like Director DiMartini said, if we decide to move forward with that project, we would likely have to look towards the general fund, because there's no other funding mechanism right now.
Do the chair?
Michael? To follow up on that, so if, because that's on the tax roll, if we wanted to increase that one, that one would have to go to a vote of the people. Is that correct?
It's a 218 assessment, so it's a majority protest. So it's a process that doesn't require voter approval on a elected ballot. It is a state-approved process, Prop 218, where it's a majority process. It requires a rate study and an engineer's assessment.
Yeah.
And so we potentially need to look at beginning that process.
Thank you. Do the question, Marty?
It's more of a comment.
More comment.
How we got here. So we have an old system. We have these state-mandated requirements of secondary, or treatment of stormwater, and we don't have any money for it. It's pretty much, is that a pretty good, accurate summary of it? And how we, how we get our public to understand that without getting very, very upset, but everybody's gonna get upset anytime you start increasing anything. But it's being aware of that, and clearly, taking a million, a million and a half to $2 million over the next few years out of our general fund, people aren't gonna appreciate just, we're dealing with stormwater. And it is a very challenging situation to be in, but we have to deal with it. So our plan currently is to wait until when?
Our plan is, one, understand the problem. We're there, and start to develop solutions. And like I said, it's looking at a stormwater rate adjustment and/or other funding mechanisms for stormwater. And that is a part of the fiscal sustainability project that work has begun, that work will be ongoing, and recommendations will be forthcoming to the city council about that.
And what date do we have in mind that we're gonna hear that?
So if we were to bounce way back, don't do it, to the roadmap for the fiscal sustainability project, the initial strategies immediately follow the adoption of this budget and a potential ballot conversation. So it is the next thing up, which is what are our, what's called immediate short-term strategies, and stormwater is a part of that bucket.
Yeah, so just to add on to, and we... Go ahead. Yeah. No, go ahead.
So just the same summary as the other enterprise funds. As you can see here, the beginning fund balance will be dropping into the 1920 proposed budget. The operating revenues are around $679,000 annually, what's budgeted for next year. But as you can see, we have this structural deficit, where our operating revenues are about twice as much. And so that just exacerbates the deficit annually every year. And we have some CIP projects that are required, that have already been discussed. So you can see the ending fund balance, although there's quite a bit of additional ending fund balance projected at the end of this fiscal year, that is very quickly dropping down to just over $200,000 by the end of 1920.
Great. And going back to Councilmember Medina's comment regarding the state mandate for the trash loading costs, just in addition to that, you know, the city actually completed the stormwater master plan in 2014, and there are over, more than $20 million worth of improvements that needs to be done in the storm system. And so that, you know, the city doesn't have any funding for that, and that's supposed to be completed in order to increase the capacity of some of the areas within our, the storm collection system. So just to kind of remind you of that as well. Regards to the accomplishments, the city, the division includes the, what do I have here? Completed the emergency repair of three failed stormwater locations. Staff also utilized the CCTV equipment and completed the video inspection of more than 3,000 feet of storm pipeline and about 8,300 feet of culverts. Staff also responded to and picked up about 1,650 locations of trash as well, and abated about seven large homeless encampments. Staff coordinated the installation of 188 trash capture device locations in high-impact stormwater collection areas to comply with this regional board long-term trash reduction goals. The initiatives include, as the city manager mentioned, the Spyglass storm drain pump station improvements, and then the green infrastructure plan. The Spyglass project was approved, the design of that was approved by council in February of this year, and the current anticipated construction about is $1.5 million, which hasn't been funded yet. The green infrastructure is almost complete and will be brought to council sometime in July. The green infrastructure is a stormwater management tool that takes advantage of the natural processes of soils and plants in order to kind of slow down and clean the stormwater and to create a healthier environment. So the budget, as shown, the revenues and expenditures has decreased. One of the budget expenditure was removed, which was the CCTV inspection. The city actually had a, staff actually had an allocation of $150,000 for the CCTV inspection work, but we've been using the CCTV equipment that we have in-house to perform a lot of the pipelines and culverts. So we didn't need to have outside contract to perform the work. However, there is a need to purchase a large sweeper to replace existing one, which is approximately 12 years old. It was, the last one was purchased back in 2007, and the cost for that is about $300,000. And then we're using the street's equipment reserve to purchase that. Again, there are no budget enhancement, but, you know, as the last bullet states, there are, there's inadequate funding to support the ongoing operations of stormwater. That's all I have.
Questions for the director, Michael?
The chair, thank you. Jimmy, the 1,600 cases of picking up trash, is that like illegal dumping, or is that accumulated trash?
It's illegal dumping pickups.
Illegal dumping. And are we keeping track of locations? Are there problem areas, or is it just a citywide problem?
It's throughout the city, and the city, our street and store manager is here to answer any other questions, but we have Excel spreadsheet, actually, of all these different locations, and actually pictures of items that we picked up throughout the city. So there's a good record of, you know, what we've collected every day, so.
Okay. And do we see that that, is it kind of a steady state, or is it getting worse? Has it gotten any better?
I can let the street and store manager answer that.
Ted?
It's actually, what we're seeing is a continual uptick in illegal dumping, because we're picking it up and residents are putting it out.
Right.
So we have no enforcement in regards to going after the residents that are doing that.
Right. Because I guess there's one school of thought that if you leave it there, then it encourages more dumping. In this case, actually picking it up encourages people to leave you more.
Correct.
Yeah.
Our feedback from the crews are they will pick up items and drive around the block and come back in front of the same residents, more stuff is put out within 30 minutes.
Wow. All right, thank you.
Yeah. And we can, we can outreach to Recology, because they do have the bulky pickup. But cities across the Bay Area are seeing that, because one of the challenge of the increased tip fees at the dump is that people don't go to the dump as much. And they'll find somewhere to dump it, knowing that somebody will call and complain, and the city will pick it up. So part of that is just announcing what the city council has already built into the Recology contract, which is the bulky pickup service at least once a year. And so we will work, continue to work with Recology on announcing that. They're twice a year. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Really, I mean, in an enterprise fund like this, where we're already underfunded, that kind of thing is just, it only makes things worse for us. So I don't know how we get around it. I think that every city is probably dealing with something similar, but that is really just a horrible waste of resources for us.
Other questions?
Just a comment. This goes back to, I think it's about getting the message out to the community that, you know, the perception is that we don't pick up. But I know for a fact that we do, and I know for a fact that we pick up and you drive away, and half an hour later, that same, a new pile is there. And so we have to get that message out, I think, where, how much the city is doing, and we've really got to get the community to help support the lack of responsiveness from people who, they just don't care anymore. So I don't know how to get that, how we need to encourage it, but I think we got to spin the negative message that we hear and make it more positive, because the city staff is doing a lot of work and not getting the acknowledgement for.
Absolutely. Anything else? Is that a yes, Marty, or?
Yeah. Yes, yes. So I guess it's repeating the point a little bit, but we have limited resources. We're deferring maintenance, and we need a revenue source. And somehow or another, I guess it just works out that stormwater's paying for the garbage pickups? Is that the appropriate place for it to be? But I'll leave it at that. It's just, it's really sad and unfortunate. I mean, it's not just, it's not just along our neighborhoods that people are dumping. They're dumping along the freeway. Caltrans, you know, I put in a couple complaints about it. They're on Highway 35, and it's everywhere. It's just new unfortunate selfish behavior of people just dumping stuff. And anyhow, yeah, it's, this is gonna be tough to how we're gonna fix it. And it's everywhere. It's not just our city. I can imagine all these unfunded mandates of how do you, how do you deal with it? So we did buy some cameras at one point, a number of years ago, putting them in high visible spaces, but apparently, they don't work, because I believe that one was installed over at 380, at the edge of Shaw Road and Seventh Avenue. But we did, we did buy a camera a number of years ago, and I don't know if, cameras are a lot cheaper now, and for the hotspots, we put, we put up some cameras, and maybe you catch some cars, you know, with the license plates, and increased penalties for dumping. Yeah, it's a very difficult situation, and we got to think a little bit more about it.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay.